Our most kind and gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come in prayer this evening, Lord, just as often as we can. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for all that you've done. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for being with us and for taking care of us, Lord, and bringing us together this evening. Now, Lord, I pray that you would just look down over us, Lord, and give us the knowledge, the wisdom, Lord, and the compassion that we need here this evening, Lord, to take care of our business. Lord, I pray that you'll touch, Lord, each one today, Lord, who's not able to be here. Now, Lord, I pray that you'll touch the ones that are sick, Lord, be with them. Touch our nation, Lord, be with it, Lord, we ask. And Jesus, with that, we pray.
Amen.
Let the language of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number four, no call.
Mr. Ibbic.
Here.
Mr. Atkins.
Here.
Mr. Blansett.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Cantrell.
Here.
Mr. Franklin.
Here.
Mr. Hargis.
Mr. Holland.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Chairman Morrison. Mr. Nunley.
Here.
Mr. Rollins.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Item agenda number five, approval of previous meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion, second. Motion by Mr. Brandon, second motion. Mr. Schaefer. All in favor? Any opposed? Item number six, approval of the August agenda.
Motion. Mr. Chairman, item eighteen. Mr. First off, will diggers will extract that if that's appropriate. Commissioner Brandon, the water. Item number nineteen, is that a new item or is that a sub-divisional line?
What's your question?
Item nineteen.
Item nineteen. And what about?
Is that a sub-divisional line?
It's an reference to water in general.
If Chairman Adam, if we extract that and we're not a utility district.
I don't think anyone's, it's not a reference to a utility district, his questions about how money was spent.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll pull that motion.
So we have a motion to approve the agenda, do I hear of the second?
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor? Any opposed? Item agenda number seven, public comments. We have Mr. Troy Van Aden, present.
Wouldn't be hard if I had.
You got to pass these around. Just a little quick back there.
I am Troy Van Aden. I would like to provide some background regarding Teledachi Trail, which is on tonight's agenda. I have dealt this plat showing the property surrounding the phase two portion of Sequoia Point. When the subdivision was started, it became apparent to the developer that the only viable path for their lower road entrance was across our property. As such, we entered into a contract for them to be able to put the road across our property. The contract stipulated that they were to complete the roadwork to county standards. If they failed to meet these requirements, the road across our property would revert back to us. This is how it's shown on the current Tennessee Assessor's map. We entered into this contract to ensure that a proper road would be built and any development would be subject to subdivision regulators and all of the lots to be subject to the original restrictions. From our perspective, what is decided about this one case actually affects and will pertain to about twenty-five other lots in Phase Two. We need to ensure the precedent we set is established for all of these lots. There is already a legal easement through Sequoia Point at the top of the mountain. While it is a legal access, the road has slid off the hill. All parties to these transactions should have been aware of this, of these facts. We want to ensure the original restrictions attached to the deed lots are followed. We are concerned the plans the new owner has in mind might not meet these. All we really want to have is a nice subdivision as was originally planned. Thank you, I appreciate y'all's time and any questions or any comments you have, I'll be glad to talk to you. Just let me know.
Any questions? Yeah. As far as the county's responsibility to this right here, because we have, unfortunately, we have a bad situation where people were not given notice that procured land. And, and I think the reversion was done in 2015?
I think yes, I believe that's correct.
Would not the county have given notice to, to all the property owners in there that, that one, that private agreement existed? And now that we're in this situation where these people are going to be landlocked, how can we help them as a county?
Well, unfortunately, the majority of the issues that both the Vanadas and the lot owners, or property owners who have bought property in this area in question, you know, are private issues. You know, the county did approve a subdivision plat for Sequoia Point, actually around 2007, 2008, it was done in phases, so, so the dates are going to shift a little bit. But, you know, as far as the county giving notice of the reversion, you know, again, that was a private contract between the Vanadas and the developers, Mr. Detwiler is, is entity. I think it was in either an LLC or a corporate name, I don't recall right now. But as far as, as what the individual, other individual landowners know or knew, you know, about the property in question, the road, I can't answer that question. The judgment, the court order that Mr. Van Aden is referring to has been of record for a number of years and it was just recently extended, there's an order extending judgment that was done, I believe in 2022. It was done in Chancery Court in Davidson County, because that's, that's where jurisdiction lies for enforcement actions that involve the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, the TDEC, which was the controlling entity over this section of Teledachi Trail. So unless or until someone or some entity, and this would apply to the county as well, you know, develops a comprehensive plan to correct all the problems, the state calls it a corrective action plan, that exists with this lower section of Teledachi Trail, I'm fairly confident that the state's not going to allow any, many work to be done of any substance on the road. It sounds like Mr. Van Aden may have talked to, to the state attorneys more recently than I have, but that's always been my understanding of their position on the road, this section of the road in general. And that's also one of the reasons why when the county, I don't want to speak for Mayor Jackson, but when the county did receive the settlement funds from the bonding company, the insurance company that did the bonds, the money wasn't spent on this lower section because the state wouldn't allow it. There weren't, there weren't nearly enough funds to, to do the corrections on this lower section that the state was requiring, so the money was used where it provided the most benefit to the most landowners.
Well, I think it's a question I would have. We have a plat that the county approved. So, and, and I can understand where the property owners that bought land and, and when you read this plat, it says ownership statement, "I hereby certify that I am the owner of the property shown and described hereon," and that, it's all a small, sorry, "and I hereby adopt this plan of division with my free consent, establish the minimum building setback lines, and hereby dedicate to the public use forever all streets as shown on this plat." So was there a process the county did not do as far as vacating this road and nullifying this plat so these people would at least not have bought a piece of land that they can't get to?
Well, the, the statement that is on the plat was accurate when it was made. And I think Mr. Van Aden would, would concur, there was actually a deed, you all did a deed to, to Mr. Detwiler's, the developer's entity, but they had a, an additional component of their agreement, they had to write a reversion in it if, if the conditions of that deed were not fulfilled. And again, county wasn't a party to that, correct?
That's right. And that's what happened. They, they were supposed to have finished the road and turned it over to the county, and obviously that never happened. And so, you know, while our piece of property does actually block the lower access to the road, when you look at the plat, it is still actually connected to Teledachi Trail through the top, so it's not completely blocked, it is legally accessible. Unfortunately, it's to be a road that's fell off the side of the mountain in multiple places. You know, to me, it's, you know, there's, everybody, including the new landowner, are all in a little bit of a quandary here because, you know, this, it really goes back to Detwiler and everything failing with the development. He's the real bad guy here, you know, they, they let him develop.
May I have your job, please? I'm the new landowner. I just want to say that I spoke with the attorney general as well, and unfortunately, the state does not have any actions that they can take over private land. It was reiterated to me on multiple aspects that they do not close private land and that all of this land is private. I believe I spoke with you as well, Ms. Spangler, prior to me buying this property, and I was told this is private land, the county wants nothing to do with it. The issue that I'm having is that I got a cease and desist letter to cross sixty feet of Vanada property when I've even discussed with them that I would put gravel down, I would try to make all the improvements I could within my own funds, and they are saying that, no, you cannot. The problem is that there was never any notification given to any landowner that uses that known entrance that is also a utility entrance and has been for over twenty years. I have one of the owners who has a statement letter Mr. Brandt is going to read, none of them have been notified that the Vanadas want their property back or that we have to pay for their property. And what I'm saying is, the county's going to have a lawsuit if this is the case because we've all been misinformed and not one of us has been informed that we can't access this land and that there was ever a public notification to the landowners. None of them, I'm going to read you a whole list of them, were ever told this land is closed.
Well, please, the map you have in front of me, straight off the Tennessee Assessor's map.
That doesn't matter, that doesn't matter.
Hold on, folks.
No.
I am, you're not on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You're fine, you're fine. Counselor, do you have anything else to add?
I have another question. So as a county, what can we do to help both parties where it's a win-win? It sure seems like, I'm not hearing the response, not that I'm looking for a given response, but it sure seems like when you have a plat that was submitted for approval and this is an approved plat, matter of fact, the roads were signed by John Graham, these people went to the plat, obviously, to look at it and they said, okay, who did you buy your property from?
Clint Carroll. Yeah, Harvey Cameron.
So Harvey Cameron, Clint Carroll, sold them a piece of property, said they had access. Is this plat have anything to do with it and should we have vacated or said, hey, this easement is no longer exist so that at least we don't have neighbor on neighbor fighting each other for, because of something they didn't get as far as notice is concerned?
Well, I, I don't know about, you know, what, any conversations the Vanadas might have had with county officials, but I didn't see anything of record when I looked a couple of months ago that was recorded, you know, showing that some kind of notice had been provided. Troy, am I misspeaking when I say that?
No, but then, you know, the reversion was recorded.
Right.
In the, you know, if you run backwards through all of the deeds, you'll find it.
So, there's also a statute, Mr. Brandt, that applies, when, when a plat is approved, that that's the first step for a road that's in a subdivision, when, when the subdivision is planned for the roads to become county roads, and not to step on Road Superintendent Pickett's toes, but, but the way it works, there's, there's a statute that says there's an additional step that's required. The approval of the plat by itself is not sufficient, it's only approved by the planning commission. It requires a subsequent step to be taken by this body and by the county Road Superintendent before a platted road becomes a county road. And none of that has been done with respect to any of the roads in Sequoia Point, not just this section of Teledachi Trail. And from, from the information I've been provided by different landowners in the subdivision, there are some who want the roads within the subdivision to become county roads and there are some owners who don't want them to become county roads. And that's, again, that's a private issue that they're going to have, we're going to have to resolve, you know, before the, the issue of county road versus private road, you know, can be, really be addressed by you all and by Superintendent Pickett. So the same thing would apply here, that, that lower section, you know, where, where the dispute lies tonight, is still private, you know, it's still privately owned. The county doesn't own it, the county doesn't have any legal rights to it other than, you know, it, it being part of an approved plat for a subdivision that ultimately failed. You know, I'm not even certain at this point, other than the section that, that the Vanadas are, are claiming by virtue of their write of reversion, I'm not even certain who owns title to the remainder of the road. It was all at one time owned by Mr. Detwiler and his Sequoia Mountain entity, but there was a foreclosure done by their farm credit lender at one point. So you'd have to, you'd have to go back and examine the foreclosure documents, the trustee deed that came out of that foreclosure to, to try to determine who actually holds legal title to the road itself. And, you know, I don't know who it is, but I know it's not the county. So, so that, that's the first hurdle that has to be overcome before the county really can do anything other than provide encouragement and support to all these parties that are trying to work through it. The other thing is, you have to keep in mind, you know, the order that, that TDEC and the state attorneys have, have had of record now for a number of years, it's pretty clear about what's going to be allowed or not allowed on, on this lower section of Teledachi Trail. So regardless of who's doing it, whether it's a private landowner, a group of landowners, a developer or the county, that, that needs to be the first phone call is, you know, to get their approval. And at one time, you know, we can talk about notice, at one time there was a sign.
There, there still is.
At the lower entrance to, to that, is it still there?
It's an official state sign. Very clear, no trespassing, passing, dangerous, violators will be prosecuted, is that them?
Excuse me, that just goes back to being private, so the, the state wants nothing to do with that. I've already called. They can't shut private land.
I, I don't.
They can't go to your house and say, your driveway is shut, it's unstable. Do you know what I mean? They can't, they can't.
I understand what you're saying, but, but the state, from what I understand, was, was the agency that put the sign there to begin with, so.
Yeah, I think that's when it was going to be a county road.
Yeah, I don't think the county, I don't think the county put that sign up.
The county did put it up.
Okay.
So are we at the point where we're going to tell these people basically, it's a private matter, county doesn't have any part of it, or is there something we can do to at least find a solution for both parties to be satisfied?
Well, the, you know, anything that the county does, again, you know, we're, we're still, as of right now, we're still talking about private property, you know, whether it's owned by the Vanadas, whether it's owned by some surviving Detwiler entity, Mr. Detwiler is deceased, so I'm not sure, you know, if it's still, if, if the last record title owner to that property was Mr. Detwiler or one of his entities, I have no idea where, where that would lie now since he's deceased and most of his entities are, are dissolved or no longer exist for some reason, some of them were bankrupted, I'm not exactly, you know, what, what the disposition of all those entities were, they were others involved. But it, it, it is privately owned by someone. So much like other discussions we've had in these meetings about, about roads, private roads, public roads, opening new roads, you know, the same laws will apply. If the county moves forward with some effort to, to establish the lower section of Teledachi Trail as a, or the whole county road, then, you know, you're, you're looking at a condemnation issue. You're, you're taking somebody's property, whether it's the Vanadas, whether it's some remaining entity of, of Mr. Detwiler's, you know, or some third party that I'm, I'm not clear on who that would be right now, but it could certainly be. And that's, in the past, it's always up to you all, you all make the decisions, but in the past, that's never really been something that this body has been willing, you know, to pursue. It's condemnation of, of someone's property to establish a road.
Well, looking at the final plat as well, obviously, said it was failed, so that means there was a bond. What was that bond amount, do you have any?
No, I, I don't remember the amount on hand. There were, there were water, there were bonds for water, bonds for roads in Phases Two and Three, and then there were subparts of each phase. There were like four parts of, of Phase Three, I don't remember how many subparts there were of Phase Two, but.
Because I was looking at the fact that the road had been approved by our road superintendent, it would seem that we are involved with this, and I, I don't see how we can just sit back and say, we, you know, we can't help you. This was a Marion County subdivision that they.
Right. And, and again, you're, you're going to be limited to, the, the circumstances are, are not changed in that as it stands right now, these, the roads and the lots in there are all private property. Mr. Van Ades' property is privately owned, you know, so does the county have the legal authority to condemn somebody's property to build a road? I think without question it does have that authority. You know, you have to pay fair market value for the land that's taken, plus you have to pay damages to the remainder of, of the land that's, that's still owned by the party that you take the property from, but.
Is that an option with the, the Vanadas to actually sell your easement so that people can get access?
So we actually presented this to the landowners specifically. We stated, and as I said, our conditions are basically the same as they were to the original developer. If y'all want a road to go across our property, we have stipulations, we don't want you just to come along and do whatever you want to do. It needs to be the restrictions that we're on these properties as they were originally sold, because that was supposed to be a nice subdivision, right? We don't want just any other thing up there. We don't want businesses or whatever. Also, if somebody goes and puts a road up there, we don't want somebody to just throw out some gravel and say, hey, there's your road, you know? We want a road. Go ahead.
So TDEC, in their order, says that before anyone can do any work on the road, it has to be a corrective action plan presented to the TDEC, they approve it, and you bring the eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars worth of fines that is attached to that order up to date. So it's not like you can go down there and throw a little bit of gravel out and call it a road.
Right.
This is, they're not playing around.
He said it was eighty-eight.
It's eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Sure. And we're not saying no, we just want it done right. Now, that's, that's.
You're on her property, this isn't county.
Hold on, hold on. This is one at a time.
Yes.
Anyone else, Counselor? I mean, my, when did you acquire the property, ma'am, just for the record?
Um, June.
June, through warranty deed, title?
Quick clean deed through Harvey, but I have a warranty deed on my other lot, a special warranty.
Special warranty deed. Special warranty deed. Any title work, I mean, any title opinion, title work before you purchase the property?
No, I'm pursuing everything myself.
So, so I understand there were, when you do that, there's no checking to see.
No, there's checks. I have, yeah, we have a title search, our, our title's clear.
Okay.
Then there's never been a reversion clause even mentioned in any of the title search, which is all going to come legally. I mean, the problem is that they keep reiterating that it's, it's county, you're saying right here, it's not county, it's private, and there was never any notification to any of the eight owners that have access below the washout. So let me just clarify that. We're well below the washout, we're not anywhere near the washout. And the utility company, the electric company, AT&T was out there, I mean, they use this road all the time. The neighbors use it, they run their four-wheelers down there, I've met half of them, they, they're walking down there and hiking all the time, so, and these are the neighbors on venture, so I've met all of them. And I'm a physician, I am not trash, so I kind of resent that they're saying, what are they going to do with the property? And the other owners are actually quite successful as well, so please don't assume that we're meth heads, which is what you mentioned to me previously.
All right, all right, we're going to stop right here, we're going to, you need to move forward. Mr. Van Aden, we'll take this under consideration, I don't think, I think this is more, it is a private matter, it will end up having to play its way out in the courts, unless you have anything else to add.
Well, I, I know, I know the Vanadas have, have an attorney, I've seen the opinion letter from, from Mr. McCollum, I know you have an attorney, you know, and if there's anything I can do to facilitate, you know, certainly, you know, I, I have a pretty extensive file on Sequoia Point, unfortunately, because of public litigation that was involved after the fact, not, not related to this, don't misunderstand, but it's to the failed development in general. But again, like, like Elizabeth was commenting on, I think, if the county's going to have any road at all, I think it needs to be coordinated through the state, we certainly don't want to run afoul of, of their order, which, which again, has, has been extended for an additional ten years as of a couple of years ago. So this is not something that, that they ignore, because they did that on their own, they didn't do it as a result of somebody contacting them or supporting them, using AT&T or property or anything like that. So it's still on, on their radar screen for sure.
Really, what was the amount of bond that was on that? And what was spent?
I think the, I think the total amount of the bonds was around, correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am, it's been a long time since I looked at that, but eight, eight million dollars, maybe something like that, but that includes the bunker of water. And the, uh, the water, as it was ultimately approved by the county, the water was to be supplied by the city of South Pittsburgh, and that, none of that infrastructure was ever built, so it became impossible to connect the development to the South Pittsburgh water system.
What happened to eight million dollars?
Well, the bonding company, since that wasn't feasible to, to do a water system, they wouldn't pay the water portion. There, there is, there are water lines in Phase One, but those were already done and paid for by the developer before they defaulted on Phase Two and Three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I can clarify a little bit of this, I believe. I was, I was over there one day and I talked to a TDEC guy, and before any work can be done on that, whether private or whoever, the county, there's a huge portion of that road that has to be taken back out, then compacted and put back in, and then there's all sorts of drainage structures, you know, you can't, a private citizen can, cannot go in there and do anything on that road without TDEC approval. And T, you know, they shut the road down. If you're going in there right now, you're violating the law. It's, it's that simple.
Thank you. I guess, Mr. Van Aden, you were on here as well.
Yes.
Did you have, if anything, you need to add?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I won't introduce myself since it's already been done. And my husband and I have owned property for thirty years in Marion County. In June, Commissioner Brandt disregarded a state sign on Teledachi Trail that says the road is closed, dangerous, violators will be prosecuted. He also crossed our private property that is clearly marked with no trespassing signs. I met Brandt, his son, and the property owner while they were working on clearing lots in the failed development. His son has a land clearing business. At the property owner's request, work had also been done on the road bed. The road bed has not been maintained since 2008 and is extremely eroded and overgrown. All three of them were told that there was no easement across our property, no access to our property, and to not cross again. Brandt and his son were invited into our home and told details of the failed development. Brandt, his son, and the property owner continued to cross our property to work on the lots. He told the property owner at some point she would get an easement. This was what she told me on my first meeting. Equipment was removed and work stopped only after Brandt was copied on a cease with, cease and desist with trespassing emails sent to the property owner from our attorney. Brandt is very aware that this is an ongoing civil legal matter that does not involve the county. The county attorney and the other county offici, and other county officials have acknowledged that our property is private. He has disregarded the law concerning no- He has disregarded the law concerning no trespassing. He did not contact us before adding Teledooche Trail to the agenda. In my opinion, as an elected official, these actions show a conflict of interest, a lack of ethical judgment, and a lack of transparency. He has shown no respect for my rights as a private property owner. I am interested in, well, I've already heard his motivation, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can we just add that she acknowledged it was a private easement? I just wanna add that for...
All right, ma'am, we're gonna move forward. Thank you for your comments. Uh, number eight, budget amendments. Uh, item number nine, budget amendment to Marion County Board of Education. Anybody from Board of Education? Motion to table? That's a motion to table, second. All in favor? Item number ten, budget amendment to Marion County Highway Department. We're on a roll. Number eleven, uh, resolution pertaining to opioid abatement agreement. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll address that. Uh, you have in front of you a resolution, uh, actually came from the state. It's been, uh, revised for Marion County's details, but it is an amendment to the existing opioid abatement agreement that has been, uh, submitted primarily because there have been additional settlements made with opioid manufacturers or distributors, particularly the Purdue settlement. And then there were eight smaller opioid manufacturers who have now been the subject of settlements that have been reached by the state and the other parties to the, any opioid litigation. So, uh, this is simply the next step that the county, the counties and the cities that are participating in this particular suit will need to prove this so that the settlements can move forward and additional opioid funds can be received by the county.
Thank you, sir.
Make a motion to approve this.
A motion, a second. A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Item number twelve, resolution, uh, use of Tracy City TDEC non-competitive grant fund. You have in front of you a resolution that, that allows essentially a redirection of funds you'd already approved for the, the purpose of the Tracy City Water Project. If you read through the resolution, it'll give you the details on what they've done, uh, when they, when they bid out the original, as I understand it, when they bid out the original project for which the county's, uh, funds were going to be used, the bids came in way over budget, and so the Tracy City, uh, Water System decided to do those improvements in-house. And so they have, have, are now requesting that they be allowed to redirect or transfer the one hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars that you all had previously committed to the Foster Falls project to a water treatment plant project that they are also doing. And this will benefit the Squatchy Mountain, Foster Falls area of Marion County, which is completely dependent upon the Tracy City Water System for, for its water supply. So, that's what they're asking for permission from you all to do, is to redirect those funds to, uh, water treatment plant improvements as opposed to, uh, the, the original project, which they did have already done in-house.
Mr. Grant, is there any spec- specifics in it that would require it to be used for a given purpose, or they cannot get that...
As long as, as long as it's for their, their water system, uh, yes, sir. That's correct. It, it's, it's permissible. Any questions? Have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, second. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Item number thirteen, contract with Prusindo Marketing Social Media Content Campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received a tourism, tourism grant probably a couple of years ago from the state for almost a hundred thousand dollars. We have a gentleman named Doug DeBoer from South Pittsburgh, uh, who's been helping us with our tourism website. And this company here will provide, uh, social media stuff, Facebook, TikTok, all that social media stuff. The state of Tennessee has approved this contract, so fifteen hundred dollars a month, total cost to eighteen thousand. The improvements by the state, we just need approval from the county commission to proceed with this contract.
Any questions?
So, this is a website just exclusively for tourism? It has nothing to do with the county website, or this is like a check request?
All right, thank you. Questions? Any kind of motion? Some motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Next on the agenda, purchase of two four explorers. I don't know where that's, who that's... It's the sheriff here. Come on up. Turbucky Day.
I like, uh, the commission said they would approve it by two twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five, forty, twenty-four. Dr. Ford, four, around state bed for a cost of eighty-nine thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars. It's already been approved in the budget, so I should ask if y'all would approve that tonight.
I'm not a motion.
A second. A motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I just wish, I just wish them things had a, instead of rear claw seats, a vinyl.
I did one of the, uh, road commission, uh, there's a lady that lives on Jeff Road, done that, but wants to, uh, it's a small road, I think there's two or three houses. She would pass the road commission about making that a fifteen mile an hour speed limit road, so, uh, you talk to the road commission, she's in agreement with that, if y'all would approve that.
What was the name again?
Jeff Road.
On the road?
Jeff.
J E F F?
J E F F.
Right. What, what, where's that at?
It's above, uh, up at Red Hill.
What, what's that hill?
Red Hill. Red Hill. Red Hill.
Then Wilbur.
Red.
About six, seven miles above, uh, Wilbur Landville, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, so I have a motion. Second motion, second. To approve the sheriff's request to make fifteen mile an hour speed limit on Jeff Road. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Number fifteen, bid for advanced one-touch turnkey heavy systems from the court.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we put a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in our, uh, budget to cover this, and this is updated in the three courtrooms of the Justice Center. Even my, uh, scholars stuff listed here, uh, that will take place, uh, to, where they can have power points, new technology over there that we're struggling with now. Again, uh, just put out the bid, and this is the only bid we receive, and that bid amount is a hundred fifteen thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. And we do have a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget to make this upgrade.
Anybody have any questions? Have a motion? A motion? Yes, sir. What kind of warranties on here?
Paige, you know what Dr. Ward is?
Paige, how about putting this bid, we got mismanagement here in the answer questions.
Good afternoon. Um, there is a yearly surcharge, um, so a yearly support fee that is going to come out of Miss Henderson's. We've kind of worked on this together, but it would come out of Miss Henderson's, I don't know if it is. So, as far as a warranty, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the warranty is, but I do know that we will have yearly support, um, every year, so...
You know, these screens are twenty-five hundred bucks a piece, lot has struck some, is that insurance coverage, or is that warranty or... I, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure, or if they go out for some reason.
Right, right. I'm sure there probably is. I don't have the paperwork with me, but I can definitely find out and let you know.
No, but, I just wanna, if you guys are comfortable with it, then, then I'm sure you've looked through that, done your due diligence and your...
Yes, yes. And this is the same system that Franklin County has, um, and they have, they've had it for quite a while, and they've never had any problems. The support's been great, um, all around, it's just, it's just a great system, so...
Commissioner Abbott, uh, I think on the last page here, it shows twelve months of hardware support. Yeah, I saw. I was hoping they could get a little, little coverage down the road there. Little coverage of parts and labor. Thank you. It also says, Mr. Abbott, that it's extended year-to-year if you do the annual maintenance program.
Is this, is this a sole source deal, or is this just, you have one vendor, or did you go out and find three different vendors?
At our parks conference, there's a bunch of different vendors that we've met with, um, there was one that we, that I got a vote for, and they were gonna charge a hun- like ninety-eight thousand per court for the same exact system that this company is offering for one fifteen. So, I just think, um, for the price, I mean, ninety-eight times three, that's a, that's a lot of money. So, uh, this system is, is gonna be very beneficial and keep things moving along with the horses.
Thank you, sir.
It was, Commissioner Grant, it was put out for bid, advertised for bids, so that's a bid received.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, moving on, uh, item number sixteen, Perry Grant, Mr. Lamb here.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Steve.
Good evening. Uh, you had a, a, a small, um, introduction in your, in your packet about this, uh, my request. Uh, just to recap, uh, we were here last year with the same request. The TEN Perry stands for the Tennessee Pipeline Emergency Response Initiative. Uh, it, it is a consult five oh one C company, uh, corporation that was former Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association, uh, in, in concert with the Tennessee Emergency Management Agency, uh, private, uh, pipeline suppliers like Colonial and Edmark, to develop a training program, a comprehensive training program for first responders in the state of Tennessee, primarily focused on the rural areas where training is often neglected. We, uh, I'm actually a member of, a board member of the TEN Perry organization. Uh, when I came to you last year, we were just getting our, our system started. We now have instructors in place. We've, we've hired, we've hired part-time instructors through the, through the Fire Academy. Our, our course curriculum has been, has been accepted by the Tennessee, um, fire, uh, fire schools, which means it will count toward credit when firefighters take the training. We, uh, we have purchased all of our equipment for, for the training. We have our computers, we have everything in place, and now we're in the process of starting to reach out to the, across the state to initiate training programs. Uh, this, this ninety, the ninety-four thousand dollar amount here is for the second year of the Perseverance software. It was a sole soft, source software, and I presented that information last year. Uh, I will note that this was part of the original grant narrative that was supplied to FEMSA, which is Department of Transportation. So, it's documented in there. This, this amount was documented in there for the two-year period. Now, our, our goal with TEN Perry, and a goal with this grant and a subsequent grant that we have that we'll be starting on, uh, next year, is to develop a self-sustaining process for this program by bringing pipeline, uh, again, the pipeline transmission people, the local pipeline groups like Marion Natural Gas, and bringing them into the organization on a fee basis and other revenue streams that will be self-supporting after the end of the grant cycle. So, what I'm requ- what I'm asking for here is, again, for the second year for the, for the main software, that we have an amount of ninety-four thousand dollars. And then, the other is, we're adding a stakeholder system, which again, is in the grant narrative. And what, what this software does is, uh, it's way beyond me. But the subscriber organizations, and again, Marion Natural Gas is not a, not a member yet. We have about forty, uh, utility groups across the state, uh, that have joined. But this software is available to them because they have annual requirements for proof of training to, uh, to the local, that local responders are trained, trained to, to respond to emergencies. And so, th- those, those members that are part of this can, can see the documented training in there. They can, they can follow the progress of it. Uh, it's, again, it's a, uh, very fabulous system. It, it records the entire training, eight-hour training process as we go, and so it's on file for documentation, uh, to, for proof of training. And so, I'm, I'm asking, uh, again, for, uh, approval for two purchase orders, one for ninety-four thousand and the other for thirty-two thousand, I'm sorry, ninety-two thousand and the other for thirty-two thousand. Be glad to answer any questions.
And make sure that this is grant money.
This is grant money, yes. And in fact, actually, we, we downloaded, uh, we, we have, we, we, we brought half of the original grant down, uh, in advance to pay for stuff. We brought two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars down into the, to the county budget. Uh, so far, we spent a hundred and thirty-seven thousand of that with an eighty-seven thousand dollar balance, and we still have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar balance to draw down on. So, uh, I'm just asking for consideration of this, please.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Look, who's eligible for the training program?
It will be, it's, it's gonna be a...
ETS, volunteer...
It's gonna be, it's gonna be rolled out in, in three phases. The first phase is gonna be, uh, directed toward the first responder fire departments. Our goal is eventually, we'll be training law officers, we'll be training nine-one-one.
And ETS.
Yeah, it, yes, yes, sir. And, and I can, I can, I, I don't wanna speak too much about it, but we had this, the, in Marion County several years ago, we, we had an incursion on a pipeline. Had we had this training that day, it would've saved a lot of heartaches and for people, responders and everything trying to get stuff sorted out. So, yes, sir. But it's gonna be available, there's no charge for the classes at all. Uh, class, a class, a session, training session is eight hours. They'll either come in and do a two-night session, or they'll do a, a one-day, like a Saturday session for the volunteers. And I have been, I've been in, in contact with the, one of the instructors who's reached out from Marion County. Uh, my main concern right now is trying to schedule some training with all the football going on, and so we can get people. But we, we, we've got, out of the twenty fire departments, we have, I think, twelve fire departments that are impacted by, by either natural gas or liquid pipelines in our county.
We got one in our town, that's good.
We've got a wild testing, yeah, for volunteer department.
Yeah, volunteer, yes, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions?
Boston, Karen, Brad.
Well, now, Steve, did you say ninety-two or ninety-four?
Ninety-two. Ninety-two, it was ninety-four last year. I'm sorry, no, it's ninety-four thousand. I'm sorry, I added, I added back the...
Second. So, I have a motion from Commissioner Rollins and a second from Commissioner Shatman. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Travis Lane?
I wanna first start to thank y'all for having me here tonight. I'm here tonight to, uh, bring awareness to something that a lot, they'll know about, and that's autism. Uh, we have been for the last few months, uh, coming up with a way that a lot of our children that has, that's non-verbal, that is autistic, or have other speech issues, can go to our parks and play in our playground. So, uh, just a little background about me is that our, our grandson was diagnosed a few years ago of having autism, and it made it a little rough on us to communicate with him, because he's also non-verbal. Uh, one out of thirty-four, uh, children is born with autism. Forty percent of those are non-verbal. So, my wife and I had came up with a way, when we talked to him, we would make little things on the refrigerator where I am pop-pop, so she took a picture of me and then herself, and then mom and dad, and then ice cream. He likes chicken nuggets, and we had all that, and we put it on the refrigerator. So, he could go up to the refrigerator, and he could point and let us know what he wants. So, what we got to thinking when we started going to the playgrounds and stuff, and he wanted to play with other kids, and they don't know that he is autistic, and he... and they don't know that he is autistic and he wants to play with them, there was no way he could communicate with them to let them know. So we started on a communication board, if you want to pass that around. My wife came up with it and we thought, what a great idea this would be if we could get this through Marion County and to all the city parks and even the Marion County Park. So back in Mar- uh, May, I ended up calling the Marion County Park Board and got on park board to present this to them. They were the first ones who approved this, to put it at Marion County Park. They also have, I think they have both of them installed now. I'm not for sure, but I know one of them's installed when you first go into the park there. And seeing this vision of ours come to reality is a great feeling because it gives all the children, like I said, it's not just for autism kids. It's for anybody with speech difficulty or anything. You can go to the parks now and see these boards and they could take those pictures. Uh, matter of fact, I've got another one here. I can show you somewhere. And they could take these pictures and they could point at them and they could say, hey, I want play or my name is this. And it gives them an opportunity to play with other kids that's in the playground. And tonight, I just want everybody to know that I am very thankful to each city, to the Marion County Park Board, and also I had a meeting with the Marion County Department of Education last week and they're gonna buy boards to go at the playgrounds of every school in Marion County. I want to thank our leaders for coming together and agreeing with this because you don't know how many kids and their families that come and visit Marion County, how many is going to move to Marion County over the next few years. And this is helps them to communicate with the communities out there. And I really do appreciate everyone who stepped up in this county to make this vision of ours a reality. Because without this, these kids would be out there and wouldn't know what's going on. And for all of the cities to come together and for the Marion County Park Board and the Marion County Department of Education to come together, this warms our hearts to see this. Because it wasn't just for our grandson, but it's for every child in this county. And I just wanted to come tonight and just to present this, that when you go to parks now, when you see these signs, you'll know, hey, i- if one child uses this sign, it's worth it. And I just want to thank everybody enough for that.
Moving to item number nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to, we have some people here related to the water issue for South Pittsburgh and I've asked a lot of questions about it, so. I understand that the Marion County Mayor's Office oversees grant money, particularly the American IC grant toward the water line expansion. I've repeatedly asked who determines the locations for the water line expansion and the reason behind their decisions. My question remains, who made these decisions and who is ultimately responsible for them? The South Pitt- South Pittsburgh Borderline Project has been halted because TDOT withdrew Marion County's permits. Why did this happen and who's accountable? Why was the water line on SR2 installed on President's Day contrary to the TDOT's guidelines, which led to the permit issues? What steps are being taken to resolve these problems and secure TDOT approvals so we can proceed? TDOT estimates that approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in additional taxpayer money will be needed to fix these issues. Who will be held accountable for these costs? Uh, before I came to the meeting, I talked to Donald Lancet, Commissioner Lancet, and he had recommended putting, uh, a motion forward. I moved to establish a special committee with one commissioner from each district to assist the mayor in determining who is ultimately responsible for the SR2 issue with TDOT. This committee would help prevent similar problems in the future and support the mayor in finding solutions so we can deliver water to everyone we had promised to. Thank you. So that's the resolution, or, excuse me, the motion.
We have a motion. I'm going forward. We have a second. Second, motion and a second. Room call, vote. Any questions before we move forward with the vote?
Just to committee to discuss what's going on for the water issue.
Okay, I, I have a question. Okay, what authority is this committee gonna have? I mean, once we get down to the bottom of who made the decisions that were made?
All right, this is my.
I mean, what, I mean, what are we gonna, what are we gonna do about it?
Well, I think the, the big thing is to identify who is responsible, how we can help the mayor. Because TDOT is saying the SR2 issue, that it's, it's gonna be a couple hundred thousand dollars to fix. We gotta know who is ultimately accountable for it. Uh, and then I think the committee would, if we have, you know, one person from each district, perhaps we could help, uh, help the mayor and come up with some solutions and come back to the rest of the board. So, it's, uh, I mean, two hundred and some thousand dollars is quite a bit of money. I would, I would hope that maybe the contractor, maybe there's an issue where we don't have to pay this money. Uh, but right now, I think we have to understand exactly what happened. We need clarity on the issue.
Any updates to share with the title of what, or go last call, because here's your work, your TDOT. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Room call, vote.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Adkins?
Yes.
Mr. Blant? Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cantrell?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Holland?
Yes.
Mr. Manxton?
Yes.
Mr. Nunling?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also like for whoever is, ends up on the committee to involve the utility districts that were affected.
I guess the question is, uh, if, if I might, who's going to come up with who's on the committee?
Since, since Commissioner Blant has moved to set the committee up, I would make a motion that he chairs and appoints the committee.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Second. He's not here.
We need, we need a point of clarification here.
He, he doesn't have the authority to appoint a committee.
Well, let me think, he does.
You can accept volunteers, volunteer with Mr. Blant.
I'm a volunteer with Mr. Blant.
That's right, yeah.
That's he's been in the water.
The simplest way to do it would be if you could get, since you've nominated Commissioner Blant, nominate himself, is you can get volunteers from the other four districts, then that, that could serve as your committee's advisory anyway. So, if you can't agree on doing it that way, then by statute, the county mayor appoints the committee, so.
Do you all like to think it over for the next few days and get with the mayor? Each of the, you know, three commissioners from each district, who, who, who's gonna represent their district? Report back, fair enough?
Yep.
All right. Moving on to, uh, approval of notaries. Are we going back to Temen Ditch Trail? I'm sorry.
Um, we, I think we just, we discussed it, but these people, there's, uh, eight or nine people, that have expressed that, hey, you know, they need help. Nicole, uh, I'll, I'll read two of them so that way we know the emphasis and we know how important this is, that we do come up with something. Dear member, this is from Nicole, um, Mullin. Dear members of the commission and board of Marion County, my name is Nicole Mullin and I purchased property through Clint Carroll in May of this year for our family's dream home overlooking Interjack Lake. We began work on our lot soon after purchase and was subsequently harassed by our neighbors stating that we didn't have a right to build here. Initially, I was told by the building inspector I could bill, get a building permit and shortly after I was told I could not without getting a court order for an easement to access my land. I have not been able to find anywhere in court records that our easement has not been reverted or dissolved. This would in fact require a public hearing as this easement affects all the landowners on the lower, I can't pronounce that word very well, the neighborhood, Takaluchi Trail, uh, below the washout. I have recently received a following letter attached. It has sustained significant difficulty in beautifying my property and preparing it for building, which has, of course, the letter related to the ownership of that land and not being able to access their, her lot. This has cost me obsessed amounts of money and, and, and time in a pursuit to remedy this. According to my plat, indeed, I have perpetual easement that shouldn't be able to be revoked. I'm asking the county to step in and assure all of us landowners that I want to pursue our dream of a home in the mountains to help us resolve this issue. So that's by, uh, Nicole Mullins. There's another fellow named Adam Miaske. I apologize for not pronouncing his name right here. Susquatchie Point has been a black cloud hanging over Marion County for nearly two decades now and a source of pain and loss for so many landowners. When I attended the first owners' meetings of the rejuvenated community back in twenty-twenty-one, I was told that my lot and those of others around me in the lower area of Phase Two, although nowhere near the infamous washout area, was deemed unfit by the county for any building or other improvements. However, I was never sent any official correspondence from the county officials confirming this supposed restriction. It was all left up to rumor and unsubstantiated claims. During the last owners' meeting earlier this year, I was told we now actually could build in our land. But a call to the county permitting office revealed yet another unthinkable obstacle. The main road originally designed to reach my land was now no longer a public easement. Once contractually shared by all neighbors in that area, instead, I'm expected to believe that I am legally landlocked out of my own property. Not only is this legal and not only is this illegal in any real estate universe, but there was no notice given ahead of this action, no public hearing, no compensation, and even no confirmation after the fact. Furthermore, the county attorney did not return my call once the subject matter of my inquiry came to light. In sum, I can use my property, but I'm just not allowed to get there. That's like me going to your house and saying I purchased the rights to your driveway. You still own the garage and are welcome to use it, but you can't drive your car across the new easement to park inside. I find the logic or lawlessness in this explanation is an effort in futility. But something none of us will en- excuse me, something none of us will any longer sit and idly, idle by and let happen. The owners in question in this controversy seem to be all accounts to be friendly, well-meaning individuals who were given poor and unlawful guidance from Marion County. And it's high time the county steps up to make this situation hold for the betterment of the entire development and to restore the property rights and access of those who have long since invested in this area's future, who have already suffered mightily in the process. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, on the, on the map, and there's like, there's another road, but it, it talks about, you're, you talk about washouts and things like that. Is this road, this road right here, I was just asking because you've been there, um, is that road unusable as well?
Oh, I think Mr. Vanetta's.
Yes, ma'am, it is unusable.
No, I'm talking about the other way out.
Yes, part of it. Up the top, that's, yes, ma'am, if you're saying up to the top. And that's what's the legal easement that they have is through the top, but the road is washed out.
I thought this down here was.
Yeah, it is, but that, this road has been here in bad shape.
I mean, but it, you can't, you can't go through it?
You can't, no.
Nobody's.
Last time I was up there.
So everybody here is without an option, yes, ma'am?
Well, and, and, and.
It's like the developer.
To the Vanettes, they had a contract. And I think that the plat, obviously, I don't know, would the plat have been approved if that was known, that a reversion clause was internal to an agreement or private agreement?
Uh, I would think that the Vanettes had, had that been disclosed to the planning commission, I, I think that would have, they would have been asked to sign off on the plat, dedicating that easement, much like that one. And I, to my knowledge, they weren't, they were never asked to do that, but.
Well, in our agreement, he had started, I mean, he had already started in Georgia. Yeah, so they, he had already started construction on down and got to where we were and was trying to access quickly through Tennessee. And he approached us about doing the easement and not just the road being taken over or, or, you know, um, approved by the county and all that. There were other things attached to the easement, I mean, to the agreement. And we wanted to protect our interests because unfortunately, uh, being there for thirty years, we have been through about five or six poor developers that have gone in and taken people's money a lot. And actually, when I met Nicole, I went up there to tell her, before you put any money, any more money into this property, you really need to do your research and maybe you should, you know, stop clearing, because I knew there was a, a court order on the property and, you know, TDOT does not like it when you start messing around with their, their orders and, and doing work. And I told her, you know, that she didn't have an easement, that she needed to start really checking before she put any more money into land clearing. You know, I told her at that point, I did not feel like she would be able to get a building permit. And she said, well, she wasn't planning on building right now, but that she would be at some point. And, you know, I'm not gonna say our conversation was not a little tense, but I, I told her again, you know, you need to really check into this because of all these issues and these court orders and what TDOT has put on the property and what the state has said about the property. So for her, you know, I didn't, I don't really understand why they continued and that's why they got cease and desist with trespassing, because they continued after my first meeting to say, you know, and we have presented her with, you know, come to us with negotiation, but we're just not negotiating, negotiating with you. It's everybody and everybody has to come to an agreement. Everybody needs to understand that they can't just zip down to their property on a road that the state has said closed, dangerous, and just, you know. But there's a lot of levels involved in this.
I think Mr. Nicole would like to say something.
I, I'm just gonna go back to the state does not close private roads. I mean, there's nothing I can do here, so.
I, 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 I've got two questions. Corey, is this a county road? Uh, Mr. Nicole, how did you, when a realtor showed you this land, how did you get to it?
On the road. It was open and notorious. Clint Carroll, I have even in, in the email or, I mean, a text saying there's no way that they can block access.
That the, the lower runt?
Yes, sir. Because it's an open and notorious road and it cannot be closed by the state of Tennessee. I have called TDOT, I've called TDOT, I've called your road people that are like, you do not have anything to do with the road. So this is private land that they're trying to revert back, that never notified any landowners. And what they're upset about is the fact that they know that they're, they don't have legal rights to do that.
I'm sorry, they were trying to revert that land, that land has legally reverted.
Right, but the right of way did not revert.
And you drove past a sign that said, dangerous.
Mr. Brand, we're gonna, we're gonna end, we're gonna stop right here. This is gonna be, we've already got concerns of conflicts of interest, and we're putting ourselves in a position, I think you would agree, this needs to be a private matter, at least at this point.
Well, I, I think it is a private matter, and at the end of the day, I mean, again, we're talking about private property, whether it's, whether it's owned by the Banadas, whether there's some of it owned by Ms. Mullen or, or other party that have been named here tonight, I mean, I, it's not my place to, to make a determination about who owns what. You know, that, that's something they're gonna have to sort out, and as Mr. Pickle alluded to, in response to Mr. Wallace's question, this is not a, right now, it's not a county road. None of the roads in Sasquatchie Point, including this lower section, don't have to trail as of right now are, are county roads.
I appreciate your, thank you very much for that, that was my.
Is there a subdivision regulations we can do so we don't repeat this again?
The, the statute that I was referring to earlier, Mr. Brand, is, you know, it's, it's the law statewide, you know, the planning commission approves plats, but the planning commission does not have the authority to confer county road status on any road.
Well, I'm not talking about the road, it's, I'm talking about notice, so if a failed subdivision, it fails, and you exercise the bond, is there a way to get notice to the public so that they know, oh hey, there's a problem here? Because that seems to be one of the things we keep hearing, is these property owners were unaware of any of this, and had they known, couldn't they have made a corrective measure, could they have done something?
I, I'm not aware of there ever being another subdivision in our county where the reversion rights that the Banadas had retained was, was an issue. You know, could it happen in the future? Certainly could, you know, is that always going to be disclosed to the county planning commission? I can't answer that, I mean, it's possible that it's not disclosed, if it's not, if it's not recorded, I'm not saying yours was recorded, I'm just saying if it's not recorded, then there's no way to know about that. You know, unless somebody discloses it to the planning commission. You know, did, did the Banadas have an obligation to notify the public that this property had reverted back to them? I don't know that they did, I'm not trying to.
No, and I'm not saying, I'm not, that's not what I'm, they have an agreement, and that agreement, I mean, I think, I understand that, and that makes sense. And, and the big thing is the planning commission, this is an approved subdivision from Marion County, so what is our obligation to that?
Well, again, you're talking specifically here about a road, and there, there is a statute that, that defines the role of the county planning commission and the county commission and the county road to it, and when it comes to roads, they're going to become county roads. And, you know, we, we've never gotten, we as a county have never gotten to that, even the second step, you know, so it's still, as of right now, you know, and it may be unfortunate for Ms. Mullen and to some extent to, to Banadas, but at this point, it sounds like they wanted the development to go because it, it was gonna benefit them, obviously, or they would have never made the original agreement with Mr. Detwiler. But that, that didn't happen, and so now, you know, everybody involved and to some extent, maybe even the county, you know, is, is left trying to pick up the pieces and make the best out of, out of the situation that's, that's not good, so.
Item number twenty-one, approval of numbers.
Crystal Crumb, Anna Lee Henderson, Tabitha Moreland, Susan Leslie Price, L. Allison Richards.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second, on paper. Any opposed? General business? Question, yes sir?
Uh, for going on three months now, the ethics committee has not met on some ethics complaints, and I'd like to know, and there's only three members of the ethics committee, can the mayor appoint two other members so that the ethics committee can meet and hear these ethics complaints and get them resolved?
We haven't had a forum without the ethics complaints being filed.
Correct.
I mean, we get one a meeting filed, so.
We actually, we actually have six, six members, two of those members that had complaints filed against us that accused herself, and we did have a meeting scheduled and couldn't get a forum, so, I mean.
Well, I think we understand, Mr. Nunley had surgery and then had a conflict, so Vice Chairman, is there a plan to set a meeting in the near future?
Yes, there is, but again, I have to get with every one of the members.
Make sure they can be there.
To make sure that they can be there.
Understand.
Which I did before, but then we had incidents where the person could not be there, and I don't blame them, okay?
Understand. Any other?
Yes, I do. Last couple of weeks, been some accusations made by Commissioner Brand, very, very disheartened that you've made some of these accusations, Commissioner. I'm gonna address them, I'm not gonna address them on Facebook, I'll address them here, you, public, God, and the cows can carry. So it's very transparent, awful, awful, used word here lately about transparency. First one is about Mayor Jackson's ties to Lodge Manufacturing. First of all, you know, I don't have a vote or any decision making concerning the library board, accusation you made about my ties with the Lodge Manufacturing, or Henry Lodge. Well, I will tell you, Lodge Manufacturing provided me with a job, provided for me and my family, and there is no conflict of interest there. Very, very, very discouraged that you bring something up where I may have lived thirty-four and a half years, not only with Lodge, Henry Lodge, John Lodge's daddy, but I go back a long way with Lodge's family, the Kellwells, Dick, Francis, Les, Bill Kellwells, and folks y'all don't know because they're dead and gone. And they, they, they were good to me, they helped me, there's some times when, when my wife couldn't have children, we adopted. After daddy's notice, boom, you're gone, go do what you gotta do, so it's like, you know, my loyalty to Lodge Manufacturing, dad gum right there. Dad gum right, and always will be. Another thing you had on here is about the National Forum Red and Bubba and the Bice, and this goes back about the library board, I might have a comment on that. Another thing you had, you had Mayor Jackson's prediction to communication with Mayor Henson. Well, I'm gonna ask you a question, I got a question for you. What was the discussion that you and Commissioner Shaker had in the doctor's office about ten months ago?
My hemorrhoids?
I've got a witness, you won't, I mean, you won't, you won't tell me, you won't know my communication, so I don't know what Josh's communication was.
I'm, anything you wanna know, just tell me, I don't know what you're referring to.
I'll take Zach's over, if you're.
Well, tell me.
Talking about the website that Mr. Warren developed, MarionCounty.com, y'all talked about it, making fun about that, and talk about how, how hard you're gonna make it on people in the months to come.
So your information is inaccurate.
Yeah, I've got a witness.
Well then, have them, please have them stand up and tell us who they are. Are you aware of this?
Y'all were talking about me in the doctor's office, that's fine, but I'm just.
And is this not part of an ethical investigation? Why are we discussing this right now?
Hold up, hold up. Mr. Mayor.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Look, you, you made an accusation to me, and I'd like to answer it.
Go ahead.
I in no way talked about you in the doctor's office. We did talk about my wife and her problems.
Now, this was not about your wife, so.
Well, I'm sorry, but the person that you are referring to didn't have the conversation that was going on correct.
So my conversation with Mayor Henson was about the numbers that your resolution that you put together, about the ninety-seven thousand dollars for three libraries, that's what we discussed in the, I think, Mr. Henson said ten phone calls he'd made to the mayor's office that day, that was a discussion. And also, I wish you, the Sappis River stay in the library board, in the library, as well as the same discussion I had with Mayor Turner when he and Grant came to my office, said, Joshua's gonna pull it out. I encouraged him to stay in, which I wish it had stayed in, but they did, and that's, that's water under the bridge. He talked to broader ethical implications about Lodge, Beth Dugger, Sean Henson. Full transparency, folks, I worked at Lodge, as I clarified a while ago. Me and Mr. Beth Dugger, whose maiden name was Bradford, we went to church together for twenty-plus years. Me and her brother Honey run around together, matter of fact, her mother brought her and her brother to my house when I had chicken box select a kitchen. Mayor Henson and I, we went to church together for several years at Sappis River Church of Christ. I go to Joshua now, says I moved, he goes to Bridgeport. Also, I bought several cars from him when he worked in Moss Mountain, if that's a conflict of interest, I'm sorry. If that's, you know, you deal with people here locally, you don't try to tell them about stuff, if you buy a loan, you buy a loan.
So this issue about the library board, so you're, you're right now litigating it in public, which is fine. I'm, 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 I don't think we have a problem with that, but I think the bigger question was, because one individual that is the chairman of the Marion County Library Board, your, your loyalty to him as opposed to your oath to the people is more important.
No, sir, I have no decision about the library board, have a library board or have, or the funding, that goes back to the fifteen commissioners. I don't have a decision, I don't have a vote. I do not have a vote.
Yeah, Chairman, I have to question, us having this, as this has actually been referred to the ethics committee, and we're here in public doing this now.
Well, Mayor Jackson, you all did a vote, play, people with transparency.
If you all had voted, one of the ethics violations was not made.
I didn't make an ethics violation, that's you. So.
We'll move, we'll move, if Chairman McGowan will be stopped.
At this point, you know, if, if we're gonna hear this ethics complaint, then the, the, the public statements and accusations against people, if you have, you know, they're innocent until proven guilty, and there's a lot of good people in this community that have had their names smeared.
Yes, they have.
Playing it out, you wanna talk about playing it out in the court of public opinion, it's all over social media. So I'd say, we turn this over to our ethics committee, let them make that determination, turn it over to the attorney, the district attorney, whoever, and let them make that determination.
They need to do homework.
But we'll put it into it that way, do you agree?
Well, I, I, I do believe that, that this was addressed and was gonna be addressed, but it was taken off the agenda because an appropriate place for us to have this discussion would have been right here.
No, no, that was, I, I think if we all understood correctly, the reason it was taken off was because we did not want those people who weren't here to take up for themselves or to be able to defend themselves, we're not here, and that was how that was gonna play out here.
Well, we do know the difference between a question and an accusation, correct? A question, so questions are being asked, and the answer would obviously settle the whole thing, right? So I don't know what you're saying, smearing or asking a question, and I don't, you're so offensive about it, but it seems to be very obvious that this is bothering you.
It's not bothering me, I'm just, I'm just.
It's just like the National Scene article, those are allegations I did not make, those allegations were actually pivotal, were, were they not? And is that something we should not address? Should we not say that the author or the writer or the investigative reporter of the National Scene that they're categorically wrong?
You are, you are a member of the Good Old Boys Club. I like to kill the whack. All right, we're gonna stop, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go back, five years ago.
You have your cheering crowd with you, that's what you're. But it's inappropriate what you're doing.
Let me, let me go back to one thing, while I said you're in the Good Old Boys Club, you, you've used that term for the last two or three years. About five years ago, six years ago, my cell phone road superintendent Jim Hall met with you, Roy Geller, who's actually the uncle, transparency is uncle, Nick Geller. Met at your house, met at Mr. Geller's house about the roads in the Combers, in the Combers at Swan. We come back after we met with you, now, I said to Mr. Hall, we went with the county commission and got those roads built on county revenues. Because you asked.
I did what?
You asked for those roads, we took them on county revenues, you and Mr. Geller.
I think the community asked for those.
You, you was, you was the leader in it, you, you the one that called the meeting, you ordered the meeting at Mr. Geller's house, and we met out there.
And then what's your point?
I'm just, well, you, you've got some help from the county.
For a community, I asked my community, I had something.
But we helped you out, but I do want to come one more time. People that, you know, people that run for elected office, I didn't run for county mayor job for money. I ran to try, I ran to try and make this a better place, which I think we've done a pretty good job. If I ran for, if I ran for money, I'd have stayed at Lodge, my last full year at Lodge, two thousand thirteen, I made a little over a hundred thousand dollars. This job in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen paid eighty-six, lower eighty-six thousand dollars.
Well, what about now?
Pays a hundred twenty-four now, but I would be making a lot more at Lodge if I wanted to make an interview, it's not about the money. If people run for these jobs, elected jobs for money, you run for wrong reasons. And, and I think I've done a pretty damn good job as county mayor. County mayor's job is being the chief financial officer of this county, not paving roads, not fixing the school system, that falls under the director of schools and under county highway superintendent. And we're in, with the help of the other county office holders and the county commission, we're top twenty counties in the state of Tennessee financially sound, double bond, double A bond rates. Last year, our budget was supposed to have a six million dollar fund balance proposed, we ended up on a twelve billion. I think we've done a pretty good job. And, and last thing, Mr. Brand, you're a very intelligent person, you've done well for yourself. And, and I wish you could help, help us more than you have, instead of trying to push and try to make everybody think we're a bunch of crooks, we're not. And me and you were friends, and I still think you're a very intelligent person, you're, you're no dummy, by any means, and you've done well for yourself, you all be proud of that.
Mayor.
And now, and now.
I think I came to you in the very beginning, and you, and, and just to talk about the money, if I'm not mistaken, I've not received one red cent in three years from this county.
Exactly.
So I'm not about the money either, I'm about doing service to this community.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have paid if you would do a direct deposit, that's it. And the state comp terms office is well working, and we keep accounts payable, what we owe you, and once you do a direct deposit, we'll, we'll write, send that check over or send that money to your account. And one other thing you brought up when we done the budget was about how the budget was done, this just come Friday afternoon, this is the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six county, county uniform charge of campus that we have to use. We can't select and choose what we want to use in our budget, I'm sure Linda just received a municipal, a coach, a municipal, they send them out every year. So this is what we have to go by. And, you know, we won't work, we, Commissioner Brand, but I, I'm tired, I'm tired of sitting here being accused of stuff that we don't, that we're not guilty of.
So I think the question is, it's always good that he asks the question, that's what you're being asked.
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, General. Any other business?
Can I make a call?
Yes, sir.
I worked third last night, come home, got in a dump truck, I've been in a dump truck I've been, so this, this may not make a lick of sense, but, Mr. Lane, I wanna thank you and your family for what you've done, your leadership, really appreciate it. I hate that any child has to suffer for autism, it's a horrible thing, so thank y'all for everything that you've done. I think it's really awesome that all the communities in our county have come together for this one thing, just like you said. Just like you said, it's not, it's not just for the autistic child, it's for all the, all the kids, so they can be one with each other, so it's pretty cool. I think it's, I think it's awesome. A lot of stuff that goes on in this county, I hate that a lot of it doesn't come up in these meetings, and, and we fight with each other on some stuff that, a lot of it, we don't have control over. So thank you so much, Mr. Lane, for what you've done.
I just wanna add something to that. After seeing what all just took place, all this negativity and everything that's happened, this was something that's positive that's happened in our county, that our leaders, our leaders did this. You can say what you want to with them, you can talk about them all they want to. I've been on Facebook, I've seen all that stuff, I've seen, yes, it was accusing of wrongdoing, and I was the first one that got up and said, "If there's any wrongdoing, have your proof before you say there's wrongdoing." Do your facts and research. If you don't have proof, don't get up here and accuse anybody of doing anything wrong. And that's a problem we have, because we got a bunch of people who will say those things, that say everything is wrong, but you don't hear one thing positive. You say it like how you want it.
We'll see what the board says.
But all this is positive that we're doing here, and I thank everybody, all the C Ds, all the board, all that, because this is positive for our county.
Absolutely, sir. I think in the last couple of meetings, we've tried to end on a positive note. At least I tried to mention something. You know, we've got a lot to be thankful for.
Absolutely.
If I might ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All on paper.